Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Some meeting documents are available for review down on the end next to Commissioner Karski. Just a reminder to silence your cellphones this morning, and both Craig and Carol are here, excuse me, this morning if you need a listening device. So we'll go ahead and start with a piece of good news. I'd like to recognize that Minnehaha County lost control in, as Minnehaha County was presented on behalf of the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance and the South Dakota Municipal League Workers Compensation Fund, a gold level certificate last week at our Minnehaha, or at the county commissioners' convention. So I think Doug Blomker, there you are, Doug.
I'll just let you come up here. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
You know, so many things are out of control, but we can do something about safety, whether it's wearing a life jacket or having an escape plan in a fire. Anyway, I thank all of our employees for being safe as best they can.
Appreciate it. Thank you, and thanks for Doug and your leadership in that area. All right, so that takes us to routine business. I consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item two, which is to approve the commission meeting minutes for September 8th, 2020.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. It takes us to bills. Bills to be paid in the amount of $5,687,913.2.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments? Commissioner Barth.
You know, today's bills include $4.5 million to the state of South Dakota, which is from our motor vehicle registration, et cetera. And of course, our bills today are for two weeks, because we did not meet last week. It also includes three patrol cars at $33,500 each for another $100,000. There are others also, and I would just comment that it's going to be an item later in our agenda, but people needing assistance are, there are many more occurrences than a normal bill with the pandemic working through One Sioux Falls and stuff, and it's important to keep track of that.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? All right, we had a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That take us, takes us to reports. There's a Minnehaha County Corner Report for July for everyone's review, and we also have the auditors' financial reports for August 2020. Vicki, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Vicki Hewitt from the auditor's office. Here's with some August financial results, starting out with the general fund cash balance sitting at $14.2 million, 4.4 million ahead of last year. The highway fund cash balance at $6.6 million, about $3 million under last year. And total expenditures at 62% of budget, about 3% under last year. The biggest chunk of that being the personnel at $28.7 million, 64.8% of budget, and other expenses at $11.7 million, 58% of budget, so all consistently about 3% under last year at this time. Revenues, total revenue at $36.9 million, right at 58% of budget, so fairly even with last year. Year-to-date taxes, $25.3 million, 54.3% of budget. And other revenues, $11.5 million, so 68.1% of budget. So most of those are pretty even with last year.
No questions? Any questions for Vicki?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
So, we seem to have more funds than last year, and yet, it's been a difficult economy out there for our fellow citizens. Is there anything that you might attribute that?
Well, the 3% under budget is helping up. I know courts are at about 50% of budget is all. Their budget is down quite a bit, so that's a big, big chunk of that.
And we're not expecting that green line to drop down to like zero by the end of the year at this point?
No.
Okay.
Other questions? These are helpful reports to help us keep our eye on where things are on a month-to-month basis, so I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you. All right, that takes us to the Minnehaha County Register of Deeds Statement of Revenue, which is there for your review, and the county sheriff's report for August of 2020. Takes us to item five, Personnel Actions. I consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item six, Abatements, and there are none. Item seven, Notices and Requests. First one is to authorize the auditor to publish notice for chiller replacement request for proposal. Mark Krins, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Mark Krins, Facilities Department. So I'm in front of you today seeking the commission's approval to advertise for competitive sealed proposals for the removal and replacement for the chillers in the Minnehaha County Energy Plant. Due to the nature of the project and services being sought, the county has deemed that the competitive sealed bid process is not practical or advantageous. Therefore, the county is utilizing the RFP process. Associated Consulting Engineering was previously hired by Minnehaha County to perform engineering services to the chiller replacement in the energy plant. The RFP project includes removal of two existing chillers, installation of two 750-ton capacity magnetic bearing oil-free chillers, and a maintenance contract. The RFP also gives the potential offers the ability to include an optional extended maintenance contract for consideration. The RFP documents include brand names pursuant to 5-18-A-18, subpart four, the county deems that the utilization of a brand name or eco-specification is in its best interest. Upon approval to publish the RFP, onsite visits can be scheduled for contractors to obtain the scope of work. Once the deadline for proposal submission is met, all proposals will be reviewed by an evaluation committee to determine the most qualified offer best suited to perform the work. Once the evaluation process is complete, an award recommendation will be submitted to the commission. Are there any questions for me?
Commissioner Barth.
How time-sensitive are we on this? I mean, can we eke by with the way things are until, I mean, is it going to be next year? Next, when, when will these potentially be put in, the new one be put in?
Over the winter, they'll be put in. So, in the RFP, the contractors have until April 1st deadline to have the new chillers up and running. So, we'll run the existing ones through this season, shut them down, and do the work through the winter.
Thank you.
Other questions? I'd like to thank you a lot for this work. I know you've been working hard on this since even we were starting the jail project and recognizing that we were going to be challenged with our capacity and that we had older equipment anyway, and trying to figure out a way that we could pay for these because they're not inexpensive pieces of equipment.
Right.
I had never even heard of a chiller before then, and so, it is, it's good to be in a position where we can be proactive and be out there, and I just really appreciate all the work you have put in to trying to understand this and, and figure out what's in the best interest of the county long-term. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish a request for proposal.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We're glad we didn't have to read out loud every page of your proposal this morning, though. All right, so item eight, Planning and Zoning Notices, there are none. Item nine, Petition for Compromise of Lean, there are none. This is our opportunity for public comment. Is anyone here that would like to speak during public comment? We always wait just a second to make sure if there's somebody out in the hallway that they have an opportunity to make their way down here. If it doesn't look like anybody's making their way down, okay. So that takes us to regular business. First item, item 10, is a brief on the Minnehaha County 4H Achievement Days. Nathan, joining us via Zoom, good morning. Yep, we'll get, we're going to turn you up just a second, turn the volume up just a second.
Okay, perfect. All right, do I sound a little better now?
Yep.
Working on it.
Okay.
There we go. That's good. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, well, good morning. My name is Nathan Skadson, and I am one of the 4H Youth Program Advisors for Minnehaha County, along with Chuck Martinell. And this morning, I am just going to update you a little bit on what we've been doing in our 4H program this past summer, so we can move on to the next slide. So just as a reminder, and maybe some new information for anyone who's watching, 4H is a national youth development program.
I think I hung up on him.
Well, he's still there.
Hold on, Nathan. Hold on. I moved the handset, so I think I...
Sorry, Nathan, we've, we've lost you for a second. I don't think he even can tell that we lost him.
He can't hear us because I hung up on him. I was holding my hands up. Oh, he can't see us either. Oh.
We don't have a camera on. What would a meeting be under these COVID circumstances without a little technology?
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by pound. Enter your participant ID, followed by pound. Otherwise, just press pound to continue. Please enter the meeting password, followed... You are in the meeting now. There are four participants in the meeting.
Can you hear us?
We apologize. We had a little technical difficulty on this end, so...
No, no problem.
Yep.
Oh.
You might want to start close, no, you might want to start back close to the beginning of your presentation. Sorry about that.
Yep. No, no problem. We'll stay on this slide. So, 4H, National Youth Development Program. We're the only government-supported youth development program in the nation, so we're supported by federal, state, and county-level governments. And we encourage youth to learn by doing and make the best better. And so what that looks like is we have volunteer-led club experiences, we provide education at in and out-of-school enrichment, and we also provide county, state, and national-level competitions. So, if we can move to the next slide. In Minnehaha County, what that looks like is we have volunteer-led community clubs in almost every one of our communities and the counties, so we have several in Sioux Falls, Hartford, Valley Springs, Brandon, Crooks, Colton, and Baltic. We also have what we call special interest clubs, so these are volunteer-led clubs that focus just on one area of 4H typically. And so we have shooting sports, and that covers BB gun, archery, trap shooting, air pistol, and we also have horse and rodeo clubs that just kind of focus on our horse project. We also have a lot of partnerships where we provide that in and out-of-school enrichment. We partner with many of the school districts throughout the county, the Sioux Land Libraries, many of the after-school serving programs throughout the county, and then other youth development organizations like the Washington Pavilion, Boys and Girls Club, Lutheran Social Services, just to name a few. So we can move on to the next slide. So this past summer looked a little different, as I'm sure you can imagine, for 4H in the county. We were prevented by the university from doing face-to-face programming for most of the summer as a precaution during this COVID-19 pandemic. So what we pivoted to was doing and offering some educational opportunities online and virtually. Statewide, we offered something called the Summer Adventure Series. It was 11 weeks of live Zooms and prerecorded material that myself, Chuck, and 4H advisors from across the state helped make and help provide. Each week had a different theme. For example, I helped out with an art week, a week about water, and a week about outdoor education. And that was something that came together really fast. We kind of pivoted towards that as soon as the pandemic really started taking off this last spring, and I thought it was very successful. We had quite a few from Minnehaha County participate. In addition to that, we offered virtual programming just to kids in our county. We had club meetings that went to virtual. We led some junior leader meetings, junior leader activities, that's for our high school-aged youth, online. We also offered some virtual programming to some of our out-of-school enrichment summer programs, like the Boys and Girls Club. And then we ran some of our contests that we normally do in person, online as well. So we did special foods, fashion review, public presentations, and then our consumer decision-making contests were all done online. And all of that, although it was different, and obviously not what we would have preferred to have happen this summer, it, we felt like it all went very well, and, yeah, the, we had pretty good participation with the kids as well. So we can move to the next slide. So the one thing we were able to do in person was offer our achievement days. We took quite a few, quite a lot of precautions because of COVID-19, so we had plenty of hand sanitizer and disinfectant available at the fairgrounds. We limited access to the indoor and outdoor spaces. We did that by not opening it up to the public like we normally do. We encouraged families to not allow extra people outside of the parents and guardians to come to the shows. We did stream the livestock shows, some of them, online for people to watch who weren't able to attend in person. We strongly encouraged face coverings while indoors. We limited the audience side, as I already touched on. We allowed livestock to be shown from the trailers, so we didn't have any stalling. So most of our families brought their livestock in, showed the animal, and then left the fairgrounds. And we limited the number of livestock exhibitors in the show arena at one time to kind of promote social distancing. So we can move to the next slide. So we did our achievement days. The other thing we did was we moved them off of the Sioux Empire Fair Days, once again to kind of help promote social distancing and to make it easier for our kids to just come in and leave. Big thank you to the WH Lion Fairgrounds and the Fair Board and the Minnehaha County Commission for supporting us in that decision. I know it was kind of sad for us to not be a part of the Sioux Empire Fair this year, but we look forward to hopefully being a part of it again this next summer. So we condensed everything into three days. We did it over a weekend, so the 15th, 16th, and 17th. And during that time, we had our display exhibits judged, so those are the things that we normally have in the expo building, set up on risers. Those include like our baked goods, art exhibits, clothing exhibits, et cetera. We did all of our livestock shows, and then we were able to do our horse show. And special thanks, once again, like I said, we couldn't have done this without the support of the fairgrounds and the commission, and also without the support of our parents and volunteers and judges. It wasn't what we were planning on doing, but for having to kind of pull it together and make a bunch of changes, we both, Chuck and I both feel it went very well, and we received a lot of positive feedback from our families and from our parents, because we were one of the few counties that even offered an in-person achievement days this year. And so, everyone was thankful just for the opportunity to come together and to show off and get judged these exhibits and these animals that they've been working on all summer. So we can move ahead to the next slide. So, Fall 2020, just to preview quick what our plans are. Everything's going to remain virtual for the most part. We've already set up with some school districts to provide virtual programming on the butterfly lifecycle. This kind of pairs, this is Chuck's program that he kind of pairs with his chicken program that he does in the spring, where he hatches chicks in the classroom. I'm working on out-of-school enrichment programming. We're going to kind of, like happened this summer, I'm going to provide some prerecorded and some in-person Zooms with our out-of-school enrichment programs, Boys and Girls Club, Lutheran Social Services, YMCA. 4H club meetings are still happening, and they are now able to do those in person as long as they are following social distancing and wearing a face covering if meeting inside. We are making plans for our recognition event and some junior leader activities as well, and we are preparing for the new 4H year to start October 1st. So, with that, do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions? I would just say, you know, thank you. It's an opportunity for us just to recognize all the hard work you guys have done, that all the hard work, all the educators across the state are doing, as they've tried to adjust to this new environment, provide educational opportunities for kids that are safe, but that are interesting, engaging, and, and, you know, we're still struggling to be able to keep doing that. And so I just really appreciate all the work that you guys have done. I think people who have had to pivot, like you said, and basically create something out of whole cloth are not getting the recognition for the amount of time and stress that is involved in trying to do that, and so, thank you very much. I really do appreciate it. Commissioner Karski?
Just follow up, you know, kind of wish I was in 4H as a kid, and my wife was. It seems like always the rural kids, the farm kids were involved in 4H, but that's not what 4H is just about. Anybody can get involved in 4H, and when you, you read the 4H pledge, I think we'd all be better off if we subscribed to the Pledge of 4H, so, thank you for what you do, and just to encourage more people from everywhere to consider checking it out.
Absolutely. Anything else? All right, well, thank you very much for joining us via Zoom this morning. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right, so that takes us to item 11, which is a briefing on an application by the Multicultural Center, and to consider a resolution in support of the Deadwood Grant Fund application. Kristy, good morning.
Good morning. Kristy Nicolaiuson with the Multicultural Center. We're trying again to find funding for the sprinkler system, and then when the sprinkler system is fixed and updated, then to do the sound system. So, we are doing a Deadwood application. We're not requesting any funding from the county. We've got an updated bid, so it's around $15,000, $16,000 to update the sprinkler system, is what we're requesting.
Kristy, make sure to use the microphone.
Sure. Thank you. Sorry. So we're requesting permission to send this into Deadwood and to get permission from the owners.
Madam Chair, Dean and I are on the multi, intergovernmental board that meets way too often, at least twice a year, for the multicultural operation, and I certainly think this is a good thing for us, and we have Mark Krins here to talk about, there has been concern in the past about the sprinklers being set off by loud sounds, and they are old sprinklers, and, anyway, I would make a motion to approve this, and if there are any questions, ask Mark to come up and supplement the info we're already getting.
I'll second that long motion.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Mark, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Just to bring you up to speed, the, the old system is a conventional system with basically mechanical devices that can potentially fail due to the vibration, so what I'm proposing is an intelligent system with intelligent devices where it's based off of a thermostat. The, the new devices, I mean, you don't, I don't recommend it, but you could literally beat on them, and they're not supposed to go off, so it would just reduce the risk of that system potentially going off and ruining that building, so...
Commissioner Karski.
My understanding of what we're approving here is the resolution that says yes, as owners of the building, we are okay with you requesting this grant from the Deadwood Fund, so we're not approving the installation, we're just, as owners of the property, we're saying it's okay for you to apply for this grant.
Right. And all Deadwood is, is for the sprinkler system, not the sound system.
Just to be clear for viewers at home, she was nodding as Commissioner Karski was speaking, so she agreed with what Dean was just saying.
All right, well, I appreciate the two of you working together. I couldn't help thinking, as Mark was speaking, that we should try to get intelligent systems throughout every place in the county. All of our systems could be intelligent. That'd be awesome. All right, so we have a motion in a second. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, roll call vote, sorry.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you both very much. All right, so that takes us to item 12, which is a One Sioux Falls Budget Supplement. Carrie Benz.
Lori Montes?
Oh, Lori Montes, are you on the phone? Hi, Lori, how are you?
Can you hear me? So Lori from Human Services, calling in to see about accepting additional funds from the One Sioux Falls Fund. If you remember, about six weeks ago, we were awarded $300,000 to assist folks in our community with rent, mortgage, and utility costs if they have some COVID-related issues. And so, in the past six weeks, we have assisted with about $227,000 worth of assistance to 218 households, and so we're going through that $300,000 fairly quickly. And the One Sioux Falls Fund would like to give us an additional $100,000 to continue to help our community with these needs, and so we are looking for your approval to accept that additional $100,000 from the One Sioux Falls Fund.
Are there questions for Lori?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
Lori, I noticed in reviewing the bills that many of the people that receive assistance from us exceed our normal limits of assistance. So, for example, normally, we only help people with $420 worth of a utility bill, and there are some in there, you know, over $1,400. If, when we take this additional funds, and I do want us to do that, or how much of it are we responsible for? So if, if we normally would spend 420, do we spend the thousand, or is that where the, the funds we're getting from the One Sioux Falls thing comes in? It seems like if there's a lot of...
Correct.
Go ahead and answer.
Correct, and so with the One Sioux Falls money, we set up some parameters with, on that needs committee, as to what kind of limits or allowances they would want us to utilize, and so, in addition to being COVID-related, we can go up to 200% of federal poverty level, and we can fund rent, utilities, and mortgage at 100% of the cost with some limits. So for rents and mortgages, it can be two months, and we'll pay 100% of that cost. And with utilities, there is a limit of $2,000 that, in assistance, that can be provided. And so, yeah, if you've seen those bills come in, there have been several that have been over $1,000, that people just have not paid on that bill for several months, especially since they weren't being disconnected for a period of time. So, yeah, we've been able to provide way above and beyond what the county typically can provide. And we have been sharing with the clients the difference that they're being assisted with One Sioux Falls funds, and so the guidelines are different in that... with One Sioux Falls funds, and so, the guidelines are different in that any additional request would have to be processed with using typical county guidelines. So, hopefully, that will clear things up, but we'll see about that piece. But, yeah, we've been able to assist above and beyond what we normally would. I think if you looked at like rents and mortgages too, those costs have been, you know, twelve, thirteen hundred dollars as well, which is substantially higher than the county usually would be able to assist using our county dollars.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
Lori, it's Jeff again. So, on people that have, say, a fourteen hundred dollar electric bill, do you guys give them any coaching on how they might control their costs as well as, you know, how to get someone else to pay their bill? You know, if you've got the window open and/or the door open and they're still running your air conditioner at full blast, you know, it's, it just runs your bill up. And so, you know, some people learn that stuff early on and other people maybe haven't learned that yet. And so, is there any coaching available to help people with that?
Well, I think as far as providing information, that is part of the interview process when the person either sits down with or visits over the phone with a caseworker, that they really look at that whole situation and ask some good questions, right? So, they ask, you know, is this amount that's been, that they've been seeing been unusual? Because there are times when it certainly is. And then, they might delve a little bit deeper to see, you know, what the reasons for that might be or that kind of thing to try and help, yeah, going forward that hopefully they don't encounter those really large bills again if it's been, you know, an unusually large bill rather than just an accumulation of a kind of typical bill, but that's accumulated over months of time.
Any other questions?
Just a comment on Commissioner Barth. I think anybody who's learned that lesson probably had a father yelling at them, close the door, turn off the lights. And if, for those of us that are fathers, we can totally understand that, so.
Husbands too.
Not eating outside, right?
Lori, this is Commissioner Bender. I'm just curious how this has affected your workload in your department and if you guys have been able to handle all these additional responsibilities with your existing workforce.
Yes, you know, we have been able to. I've been kind of surprised. I expected maybe a much larger response to having the One Sioux Falls dollars, and we, you know, we've certainly seen an increase, a substantial increase. But, our caseworkers have been able to still get to people within, if not that day, by the next day, doing that reach out by the phone if it's a phone interview. So, you know, it's increased, and they would say they've been busy for sure, but I don't think it's been unmanageable. So, so far, so good.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Lori? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make that motion, and I have one more comment, I guess.
I'd second the motion to receive the funds from the One Sioux Falls Fund.
I would like to see what the finances work out as far as these additional costs that we are helping with. And I would also point out that with distance learning going on in our schools, that it's important that people have some kind of high-speed internet affordably. Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item 13, which is a brief and a request for approval of the MacArthur Grant application. Erin Serska and team.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Can we just pull up the PowerPoint? Thanks.
I have, good morning, I'm Erin Serska, I'm Community Projects Director at USD Stanford School of Medicine. With me in person today, I have Shar Green-Maximo, she's our Community Engagement Coordinator, and as you'll soon hear, this will be a big piece of this work over the next few years. And then, on Zoom, we do have Bridget Diamond Welch, and she's our Lead Research Scientist and to be credited with penning all of the documents that you guys have, the application and the data analysis. So, if there's any questions to field on that, she is also on Zoom. Bridget, can you say hello?
I'm not sure she is on Zoom because I normally heard...
I'm here.
Oh, you are? Hi, Bridget.
I have to find my mute button.
Awesome.
Oh, I see. Oh, there you are. Hello. Nice to see you.
Thank you. Can I push it on this? All right, awesome. So, we're just going to dive in. Judge Robin Howman presented at the last commission meeting that was held two weeks ago and really did a great job outlining the work so far that has been done with our first two years of an implementation grant. Because what I'm here to talk about today and ask for is approval to submit our renewal grant for two years, which is up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for two years, so a total of seven hundred thousand dollars. So, today, I'm focusing on what our application is really looking at doing for the next two years based on the parameters that they set forth. So, this first slide is really just the overall budget, and I'll go through each objective and how it ties to the budget. Just some initial comments is there are two part-time positions in that personnel that we've talked about during budget season. We have our Project Director, Data Coordinator, and Community Engagement piece with the USD contract, and then we have a substantial amount of dollars towards our community engagement work. We have some data tools and some dashboards on that budget. And then, travel, we cannot do travel until 20, the second year due to COVID and some of the parameters from the MacArthur Foundation. And then, our meeting facilitation expenses, so I'll kind of go through our objectives and how it relates to this budget. The first goal is looking at that pre-arrest decision point, and we've done a lot of work on this. COVID helped expedite some of that work with the bond schedule and some site releases. So, what we're looking at for these next few years is to have ongoing data analysis, do some evaluation-type work on the work so far, do kind of an inventory to do some gap analysis and see what can be filled in based on the needs, on the data, and work with our committees to push that out. And then, we're also going to hopefully create then, based on that gap analysis, policies, procedures, and programs for the need. The big piece of this is once our link is open, our Community Triage Center, this will be a huge referral point for law enforcement for folks with needs that can be served at the Triage Center. So, the budget allocation that matches this goal specifically is the Project Director costs, the data analysis, the data tools, so a data dashboard. What we're hoping to create, other communities have done that, is a live dashboard for law enforcement, Metro 911, and potentially other referral sources to look on this and say, what is available at Link right now for referrals? If I come into somebody in the field, is there a bed or a space open for the needs of this person to help expedite that process and warm referral? The other piece that's kind of a part of this is we had originally planned to do a site visit to Tucson. They're doing a lot of innovative work at their pre-arrest or that arrest decision point with behavioral health and other law enforcement strategies, as well as court strategies and different things. Due to COVID, it was postponed, so we wrote that back in for year two of this grant. Goal two is case processing efficiency, and this is something that we really worked hard on this first two years, as Judge Howman explained a couple weeks ago. But we hope we're going to continue to do ongoing data analysis. And really, a big piece of this is to help and develop strategies and address some of those FTA's that we saw. It was always a goal of ours, but during COVID, we saw kind of the COVID, you know, help kind of exponentialize the effect of folks being able to get to court. Judge Howman worked really hard in getting remote trial options. She's working with our UGS to have more Zoom-based court for them. She talked about the new website for folks to be able to look up their court date based on their name and their date of birth. It's very exciting. And then, again, doing some of that evaluation of the current processes, identify gaps, and then work with our implementation team to identify strategies based on that data. And we've already implemented the in custody review team, which is a bi-weekly meeting to staff cases of those folks in custody to see if there's any way we can expedite their case or if they can be released. Fast-track program, which really targets our possession-controlled substance to really process them through the court to get them finalized faster and access to services. Our pre-trial piece that we've implemented over the past few years is a part of the strategy, so we've developed those pre-trial release options you guys have heard about, our risk tool. They staff the in custody review team and other things, and then our risk instrument. The budget allocation that goes towards this is the Project Director and the data analysis piece, the part-time pre-trial coordinator, and then, again, I have a data dashboard. There's two dashboards we're hoping to develop. The first one is the one I just explained, which is live for referral to the link. The other one is an internal-facing dashboard to have all of the data that's associated with this grant available to all the stakeholders that are a part of our committee or implementation team to kind of track progress and access that data at any point that they want. Goal three, SUD, is Substance Use Disorder and MH Mental Health Goal. And again, this is really focused on identifying those folks that could be better served at the link, specifically our sobering center right now that are housed at our facility here will soon go to the link and getting them folks straight to those services. We're going to have a gap analysis and evaluation, just like any, all the other ones, to see what's been successful, where we have opportunities to grow, and then address those opportunities. And then, there's a diversion program. Now, this is a, it's called COSAP, which is a grant that the sheriff's office applied for a few months ago to help fund some different efforts in the space, specifically some diversion work with our state's attorney in transitional housing. And we do not know if we got that grant yet. I know some federal grants are starting to come through, but we should know by the end of October. So, what the foundation likes to see is that leveraging of funding to help invest in all of these different things, so it's not just this grant funding. The budget allocation that helps support this is Project Director, Data Analyst, the half-time Alliance caseworker. Alliance is a key piece in this. They've done great work. In fact, they presented a poster on how great their work was at one of our conferences when we had in-person conferences, and just very, very impressive. So, we have an Alliance caseworker that specifically works with those folks that will be going back into the community that have access services at the link to make sure that they can be connected to the right services and hopefully maintain stability within our community. That person has already been working with our emergency departments and our current sobering center and detox to serve this population. And then, again, that site visit to Tucson also applies to this target population. And then, of course, both of the data dashboards apply to this as far as the one to utilize the link and then the one for an internal-facing one to access data. Goal four is racial and ethnic fairness. So, this goal is really looking at our community engagement work and our racial and ethnic equity strategies. And what we're hoping to do here is really provide the opportunity to engage in the communities that are involved in the justice system and garner some feedback and involvement from them through a few different ways. So, we're going to have ongoing data analysis where we aggregate everything by race and ethnicity for our stakeholders to look at. And we're continuing the building of our community involvement. One thing that you guys have as an attachment is our Community Table Event that the Sioux Empire Leadership Council helped coordinate, and Shar, as the Community Engagement Coordinator, was the main staff. It was very, very successful. Lots of great, great involvement from our community. And like I said, the attachment kind of outlines all of the themes and different pieces from that. So, we're hoping to maybe host another one of those. Something that was identified by our implementation team and as part of the themes that we got from that Community Table Talk is training for all system and non-system stakeholders on community engagement, implicit bias, and that sort of thing. And then, we also want to develop programming for the target populations of Native American and Black African American. So, what that looks like for budget allocation is the work of the Community Engagement Coordinator able to kind of coordinate all these different moving pieces in this target area. And we're hoping to have at least two trainings and one conference per budget year of the, of this grant for the next two years. One thing we're proposing to fund is, I don't know if some of you have probably all heard of Leaders of Tomorrow from Think 3D, which is a very successful leadership program within our community. They've developed a Leaders of Tomorrow for Justice Involved. They're tweaking their curriculum a bit, and we're bringing in a few contracted expertise folks, Terry Leggins and, the plan is Terry Leggins and then Serene Thin Elk. So, it's very, very exciting of that development. And then, also having contract with Urban Indian Health to have them, you know, have programming and services available for our Native American population. The other budgetary items that don't, aren't specifically, they all kind of fall in. Like I said, that meeting facilitation, so a lot of you have been to meetings, meeting facilitation has some costs, so it's space, and if we have to bring in an outside facilitator to walk us through a kind of a strategic planning or problem-solving session, and any meeting supplies and materials that's needed for that, and then also travel funds. And just like I said, the first year of this grant, we will not be traveling, it'll be in year two, and there's three MacArthur Foundation conferences built in. And then, the strategic partners of this initiative usually have like a mental health conference and a pre-arrest conference. So, we wrote in dollars to send stakeholders there, and then that site visit to Tucson. So, with that, I will turn it over for any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Barth?
Erin, your gray cells are so much faster than mine. I observed some of it, I think. We'll have to talk offline sometime. But I'm wondering, with this special session of the legislature coming up, and this is something I'll probably bring up later, is there anything that we should be asking the state for that they could do with COVID funds that might fully flesh out your program here? And if you can't think of it right now, maybe you could get back to us.
Yeah, there's lots of opportunities to look at, you know, leveraging the COVID funding to assist in serving the people of our community, especially those that are system-involved and have other needs that are, you know, part of the target populations of this grant. There's lots of examples we can look at from across the nation, but offline as it becomes closer, if you guys have questions specifically, we can definitely talk about that offline and see if there's any opportunity for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Karski?
Thank you, Erin. You know, I agree with Commissioner Barth, I hate to do it, but he's right. We're lucky to have you and to be managing this program. My question involves Link or Triage, and, you know, we're really looking at the data. And I didn't, I don't recall from the RFP, is the provider for the services for Link going to be required to open all that information for us to look at that data? Because that's coming through this program, right?
Right. So, how this, this grant is supporting the Link through like meeting facilitation, staffing the board, staffing our Project Director, and then the data analysis piece and research piece was such a big chunk. If the Link were to contract it itself, it would be a big chunk of dollars. So, that's how it's supporting it. So, you're correct. Part of the contract with the provider that the Link Board will have is, you know, the willingness to share data based on HIPAA and any other laws as appropriate. So, we have some of those, we had some of those data sharing agreements already with our initial baseline report, which is on the county website, if anyone wants to review that. So, there's already kind of a precedence and examples to use. And I know the four partners that make up the board want to have that data, and as leaders of their organizations, I'm sure they'll have work collaboratively to make sure that everyone has the data necessary to make the proper decisions.
Truly, I mean, Link or this project is a three-year grand experiment that we have to know by measuring data, is it, how successful is it? So, critical to be, have access to everything and to be, not only have the data but know how to interpret it and make sure that it is doing what we want it to do.
Yes, and that's, you're exactly right. So, yeah, all of that is built in, and the board will be working through. Like I said, there's some agreements to get in place, but we have that precedent set with the baseline. So, we have a significant amount of data already, and then there'll be different pieces to insert, you know, based on the services and programs that they get developed.
Other questions? I just would say, you know, I've had the privilege of being on the Safety and Justice Challenge Committee, and it is an amazing amount of work that goes on behind the scenes. But I think that, you know, one, Commissioner Heiberg is not here today, but I'd like to give her a lot of credit. It's through years of work in networking nationally through NACO that we are in a position where we can be applying for these grants and be reasonably optimistic that we might have met the criteria to have people trust us with this, these kind of funds. And I also just personally appreciate how we've set the budget for this upcoming year in the sense that we've really focused a lot of dollars on gathering data and developing community engagement without adding FTEs to the county budget that we struggle with every time we finish one of these grants to figure out how to continue those positions. So, this gives us an opportunity to leverage these funds, get the information that we need to keep, you know, moving the ball forward, but having the data then to be able to decide at the end. to keep, you know, moving the ball forward, but having the data then to be able to decide at the end where it's in the best interest of the county to invest funds in, in FTEs that can actually continue that work. So I thank you for that. Anything else? All right, if there are no more questions, I would entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for coming this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to item 14, and it's a briefing from Jason Gierman on National Disaster Preparedness Month. Good morning.
Good morning. Jason Gierman with Minnetonka County Emergency Management. Just to make everybody aware that it is National Preparedness Month, September. The 2020 National Preparedness Month's theme is disasters don't wait, make your plan today. Encouraging people to think ahead, mitigate the problem so them and their family don't have the big issues at the end. You know, we've been through several flooding issues, some tornadoes, and now the disaster of COVID. But just want people to be aware to prepare your family for these things. And, you know, we all are from South Dakota, and when winter arrives, you know, we all need to pack extra things in the car, keep your gas tank full, things like that. But just encourage people to think outside the box on what else may happen in their community. And also, use the weather apps. There's plenty of them out there. And be aware of those. Minnetonka County does have a plan to assist municipalities within, within our jurisdiction. And we just want you to be aware of that. The highest priority is preservation of life and property. You know, that goes beyond disasters, too. That's with just safety overall and public safety. And we've had a good partnership with the commission and county officials over the years. And I think we're sitting in a very good place, especially with the experience that we've gained, you know, in the last couple of years and currently. National Incident Management System, you know, we utilize that, and there's a certain awareness level to be there. And the, kind of the purpose of this is just to bring this plan forward and make sure that people are aware of it.
Questions? Commissioner Karski?
Not directly related to National Disaster Preparedness, but just, we're dry out there. I mean, it's getting real dry, and the crops are ripe and drying out. And I just would ask that, you know, keep us apprised as a board, kind of, you know, what's going on, if we need to be aware of, you know, burn bans and that type of thing. I hate to go there. But, you know, it's been a good year for crops, and we don't want to start losing, like you said, lives and property or livelihood. So keep us aware of what's going on, if you don't mind.
You know, the one thing that does happen every year at this time is harvest, obviously. And, you know, the combines may start on fire, but real fire is very good at letting me know if they have a concern, especially if they start getting more grass fires. And I haven't heard that yet. But they're usually pretty much on top of that. If their business starts to pick up, then we look at doing something, but, so.
Commissioner Barth?
Well, thank you for you and your department. I have a lot of confidence in you guys. But, you know, it seems like disasters come where we do not expect them. I mean, we didn't expect COVID. We didn't expect that crazy flooding of last year. I think tornadoes are more in the area that we sort of expect. But we, we better be ready for who knows what. And if somebody knows, please let me know. You know, I, I hope a hurricane doesn't come here. But I guess we've had the equivalent of that with ice and snow. I mean, these big storms that, that come. And, you know, even an internet outage is virtually a disaster. So keep up the good work and keep us informed. Not that we're much help, but we'll do what we can.
Tornadoes generally happen in the spring. And if we recall, last year was in September when it happened, so.
And this also brings up, I know that we'd been encouraged to take some of the National Incident Command courses. And I know several of us had done that. And I think COVID hit, and then we, I personally got off track on that. But I think that would be a good goal for the commission this year, too, is to stay engaged and, and continue to learn about that process.
They put a lot of it online right now. And make sure you have your coffee ready if you want to do that online because they're pretty, pretty dry. But it's something, at least an awareness level, helps you out with, so.
It's an amazing process, though. It really does work when you see, you know, the command post put up, stood up kind of overnight, and people kind of know what their tasks are and, and dig in. That's, that has served our community while in flooding and in the tornadoes in September and in COVID. You know, that people, it provides a structure for people to do what they're good at and make sure that they aren't duplicating efforts, but that they're all working together towards a goal of keeping people safe and getting the community back on track.
I've seen where that hasn't been used. If you've seen both sides, it's very good when it's used. But if it hasn't been used, it's almost a disaster in itself. So it's, it's a good thing that, that we have that system.
Lucky to have you. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, that takes us to item 15, liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning?
I wish I didn't have any, but if you'd allow me.
Mr. Barth?
We had a meeting of the East Dakota Water Development District. And, you know, there's concerns about the merger of the DNR and Agriculture Department. With, with water, they've begun drainage on Lake Thompson. You know, the outlet for Lake Thompson is like a quarter mile or half a mile wide and an eighth of an inch deep. And so it was moving very slowly. Well, they've been digging a trench for that water to go down. And the water's not going down, but everyone feels better knowing that there is that trench there. Additionally, I guess, there are other strange situations in the east area here where the nitrates in the, in the river go up this time of year. And that's not replicated in Minnesota or in Iowa. We're not sure what's going on there, but we're working with our testing equipment to try to isolate what's causing the nitrates to sort of blossom this time of year. Additionally, we did have a little bit of a program about the algae in the lakes and stuff. The blue stuff is bad. Don't let your dog, your horse, your cow drink that stuff because it'll kill them relatively quickly. The green stuff is itchy, but not to the same extent of a problem that the blue stuff is. So, and I guess that's my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Karski, no? Okay. I know that last week was the statewide county commission meeting, and a lot of us were able to attend. And I want to again thank Commissioner Heiburger because she served as our president of that entity last year and had a lot of responsibility for the convention. You know, it was a challenge to hold a convention right now under these circumstances. And, and, you know, just like we heard from 4H, there were a lot of steps that were taken to try to keep people safe. And, and, you know, it's a learning experience as you try to put those things in, together and put people back on track. And so, but I really appreciate Commissioner Heiburger and her leadership in that. The Accessible Housing Board, we continue to look for our final member on that board. And then we will be bringing that forward to the commission for approval of the membership on that. I think that's it for my liaison reports.
Madam Chair, if I might comment, I bailed on the convention after a half a day just because I, I saw so many people without masks, even though on the door of the Ram Cota it said masks required. But I would concur with you about Commissioner Heiburger. I believe that she was more determined as the leader of that organization than her predecessors to try to upgrade our operations and peer and stuff. And I really appreciate her putting her foot down a little bit and demanding more.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to 16, new business. Is there any new business this morning?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
As I mentioned earlier, I think we need to keep our eye on the potential for our needs being met in the special session and peer. And whatever they are, we need to be in, we need to think of what we need. We need to be in contact with our legislators. And I would urge every department and all of us to consider what, you know, just like with that Sioux Falls One Fund, I mean, we're spending important money on an important issue there. But at some point, we don't have that money. And whatever we can do, we should try to do it.
And I know Carol Muller, our commission officer, did provide some input last week in a process where they were looking for feedback from county governments in particular and of some of the challenges that we face. And, and also thankfulness for the dollars that have been directed towards the county so far. So, but that's a good point. Thank you. Any old business? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was like, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much.